Okay, we're gonna call the meeting by order. It's six thirty. So this is the committee at the hall meeting for the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal for the Administration and Finance Committee. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Can I have a mover please? Deputy Mayor Deshaun and Councillor Hunter, those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is carried. The agenda is approved as presented. Item number three on the agenda is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures there this evening?
None.
Minutes will show that there were no disclosures this evening. I'm gonna go do the minutes of the previous meeting just quickly. Minutes have been circulated. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to approve those minutes from the last meeting. You know, so this is just business arising.
Correct.
Okay, so it's business arising. Did anybody have any business arising? No. Guess we approved them at council, didn't we?
Correct.
Yeah.
No business arising, that's good then. That gets us right into number five, which is Mr. Al. Everybody's been introduced to him and Warren. Warren, excuse me, I forget your last name.
It's Leeway.
Leeway, I'm sorry. My apologies, Warren. And so we're gonna have a little seminar about the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and we're looking forward to that. We all need the refresher, Warren.
Good. So, good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk very generally about the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. So it's pretty central to your job. In fact, it's part of your, part of the declaration of office that you took. Section two thirty-two of the municipal act requires you to make such a declaration. Paragraph three of the standard declaration quote says, "I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act." So it's essential to your job. Oh, the purpose of the legislation is pretty straightforward. Malon Fisher has a good quote, "The obvious purpose of the act is to prohibit members of council or local ward from engaging in decision-making process in respect to matters in which they have a personal economic interest." The principles that animate the legislation are transparency and public competence. So there's a few quotes I've got here, but I'm not gonna do the whole thing. The underlying parts are central. It invokes the issue of whether we can be competent in the actions and decisions of those we elect. The suggestion of conflict runs to the core of the process of government decision-making. It challenges the integrity of the process. Similar sentiment more recently in the Ford case. The major purpose of the NCIAs is to promote transparency in municipal decision-making by requiring the council to declare a conflict when he or she has a pecuniary interest at stake. The legislation is also designed to prevent the conflict that would arise if a member would revoke when he or she could benefit financially from the outcome of the council decision. So these quotations sort of make the question of what exactly is a conflict? What does a pecuniary interest? Hopefully, neither term is defined by the legislation. However, it's sort of clear from the way the act is drafted that the target is, as Mr. Al has indicated, financial or economic interests that would compromise decision-making. So it's not, it's not any conflict, you know, personal conflict, whatever. It has to be monetary in nature. The act sets out three separate types: direct, indirect, and deemed. So a direct pecuniary interest is easy. These are interests where the member could actually receive money from a decision. A decision that would directly result in the receipt of funds to that person. However, it could also arise in cases where you wouldn't directly receive money but your business or your livelihood would somehow profit from the decisions. So the example I used is if one of you were a developer, a real estate developer, and council somehow was involved in the decision to award you or your business that contract, that's gonna, that's gonna net you money likely. That's, that's a conflict. Indirect pecuniary interests. These arise in cases, typically business relationships such as shareholders, directors of small businesses, or partnership, partnership interests. Employee interests would be another example. So the example came up earlier of if you were an employee of a business that stood to gain from a, from a decision, that would compromise you. So you don't have a direct interest in the sense that you're likely not gonna get money, but a business to which you will indirectly benefit. Deemed interests. So these interests essentially target relationships of close family. So if a member of your child, or your, your parents, or your spouse would benefit from a decision, the, the act deems that to be a, to be a compromising conflict. And at the bottom there is an underline, "if you know about it." So if you're not aware that your child would benefit from a decision of council, it's not a conflict of interest. So some cases, this is a little bit scary. This is for the 2003 case, but what this case essentially says is there doesn't actually have to be an actual pecuniary conflict if there's a potential conflict. And this is with the gray area of this legislation, which is sometimes difficult to advise people on, advise councillors on. The legal test is a potential conflict, not necessarily an actual conflict. So you have to be very careful and mindful of that when you're thinking through these things. So the actual conflict, the actual quotation is, "The standard to be applied cannot be properly and neatly captured by a series of guidelines. I accept that it's best expressed by the quotation posed in Green and Warren's. Does the matter to be voted on have the potential to affect the pecuniary interest of municipal councillor? Subjective, not reliant on your subjective feelings." So even if you personally believe it won't, if it could, you're authentic.
See that, Ian, no?
So it's not, regarding the test, it's, it's an objective test, which, which is, it's not dependent on your personal feelings of whether or not you stand as best as a decision-maker. But rather, whether, an objective test is sort of, it's a legal fiction. It's a third, if you were explaining this to a third party, probably unfamiliar with what's happening, if that person would perceive a potential pecuniary conflict, that would, that would need to test. Even if you personally, in your own subjective knowledge, believes it wouldn't, you would, you'd be outside.
He's up to declare.
Well, yeah, but be careful. Just, you're, you're talking different stages here. We're talking, you still have to have the pecuniary interest. What the difference between a subjective and objective test is that we're not talking, we're not talking, I would just say, I can get an example. You work for the small company that's bidding with the township, or you're a shareholder in it, and, and truth is, you're not gonna get any money out of it. Because if you get the job, the way your company is set up, you don't get a share of that cut. Other people do, because it's not your department. So this, in, in truth, subjectively, you say, well, I don't have a conflict of interest because I'm, I'm not gonna get any money. But if you told this to an outside person and said, "Pat works in a company with four people, and they're gonna get this contract with the township," an outside person would say, "Well, that looks to me like there's a potential conflict." Okay? So your company may be set up where there's four of you, and, and one does the engineering, and one does this, and one does that. They're gonna get the engineering contract, and the deal is whoever got the contract gets the profit from it, even though the four of you are together. So all this sort of detail proving there is no conflict, they're saying, "Well, an outside person objectively looking at it would say, 'There's only four of you in the company, and you're gonna get a contract from the township. It looks like it's a conflict to me.'"
Oh, so then, okay, I see that, yeah. But we don't test our, we don't test our potentiality for conflict with third parties normally?
No, but you gotta pretend you are.
Oh, I see, okay.
But that's the objective test.
How would it?
What a court does is the court says, "We'll look at it objectively. How would this person know?" They used to call it the, the Clapnamomnibus test.
Yeah.
The, what did the Clapnamomnibus, the House Lords in England said? "The gentleman who takes the Clapnamomnibus home every day, gets off the bus, what would he think?" Well, of course, it's, it'd be man at that time, not woman. So that's the sort of the objective third-party test. The ordinary person, the man on the Clapnamomnibus.
Sorry, I did interrupt. That's okay. We'll, we'll come back to the, to the potential. I think there's actually a tension in the law, to be honest with you. But we'll come back. There's a, there's another question about remoteness that I think is built into the legislation, but I think it'll clarify when things are engaged. I just wanted to, this case in particular, I thought was pretty scary. But the act sets out remoteness rules, and we'll talk about that in a second. So just so you're aware, under section four of the act, there's a series of exemptions. There's nine in total规定的 exemptions. I'm not gonna go through them all there, all here, but they're set out there. They're very, very specific rules that will point where there is no conflict. The really interesting ones, and this comes to the issue of remoteness, are set out in section four at the very bottom. So the act, and I guess you talked about this earlier, excludes common pecuniary interests. So these are interests that are shared by the public generally, or a large section of the public generally. So one of the examples I can think of is a, is a global reduction of property taxes. That's a benefit that you can share with all ratepayers, so that's not a conflict of interest. Or something that, the dump is actually not a bad example. If it either impacted your property taxes one way or the other, because your, your land volume went down, that's a pecuniary interest, but it's one that you share with a whole bunch of people, so it's not a conflict of interest. The other one that's interesting is trivially. So if the conflict, the pecuniary interest is so remote or insignificant that it would not influence your decision, so you stood to make fourteen cents, it's not a conflict of interest. And what these are doing, what these two provisions are doing, is creating sort of a remoteness regime to the act. So if the, if the pecuniary interest is so, it's amorphous, or, or it's unlikely to actually result in, in a, in a benefit to you or your, you know, your family or your employer, or it's shared by everyone, you don't have to worry. So that's, that's what I mean by remoteness. If it's, if it's too, too far away, if the connection between the decision in your pocket is so distant that a reasonable person would not perceive that to be a conflict, you're safe. Okay, if there is a conflict, okay, if there is a pecuniary interest, a section five of the act tells you what you have to do. So it's important to note that this happens prior to any discussion, prior to a meeting, or prior to the discussion at the meeting. You have to disclose the interest and its general nature if it's an open meeting. You can't discuss, you can't participate in the discussion deliberation. You can't do any other manner of influence before, during, or after the vote. Obviously, you can't vote. If it's a closed meeting, you have to leave. So if it's open, you can stay, you just can't talk and you can't vote.
Now, it's been quite common for people to leave, to declare the interest at the beginning of the meeting and then leave the table during the discussion.
That's fine.
But it's not required.
It's not required. Unless it's closed, then you gotta get out.
Yeah.
Section six imposes a relatively novel set of recording obligations for the, for the township. In open meetings, the declaration has to be made, and you have to describe, the councillor has to describe the general nature, and that has to be recorded in minutes. In closed meetings, the clerk must record the declaration of interest. So if there's a problem, the councillor would leave, but the clerk does not have to describe the general nature thereof. So in closed meetings, it's just the declaration, and the member would leave the room.
And what about the, what about the written disclosure? We're under the impression that the new act requires that even if it's an open public meeting like this, and we declare the conflict at the beginning of the meeting, that we're obligated to file, to write it out and file it with the clerk?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
But not in a closed meeting, no. You simply have to make the application.
Okay, all right.
And that's just, that's to protect the integrity of closed meetings.
Yeah.
So the, the teeth of the act are set in section eight, the enforcement regime. So a lot of this, if not all of it, is, is basically driven by ratepayers normally. But an integrity commissioner could initiate the application, and so could, although I can just see a judge rolling his eyes at this, but someone who's not a ratepayer, but who's demonstrably acting in the public interest could bring an application alleging that a councillor was outside this act. The application has to be filed within six weeks after the elector or the interested party learns of the violation. Okay, so that's not six weeks after, it's whenever they, they find out. But the ultimate limit is six years. So under eight-six, after six years, you're off the hook. Section ten sub-one sets out the remedies. This is what a judge can order. Judge can reprimand the member or former member, suspend remuneration for up to ninety days, declare the seat vacant, disqualify the member for up to seven years, or he ordered the member to pay restitution to a party or the township.
Restitution being if you put the money in your pocket, you gotta pay it back.
Right.
I don't know what that's about.
It's also interesting, this was, this was amended recently. It used to, it used to be a mandatory declaration of the, of vacancy, and I think a mandatory disqualification, but it's now discretionary.
Oh, at whose discretion?
The course.
Oh, at the course's discretion.
Yeah. And actually, this is helpful segue. In section ten-two, when the court is considering whether or not to impose the remedy of the ten-one, the court can consider whether the member took reasonable measures to prevent being offside the act, disclosed the pecuniary interest to integrity commissioner, and sought advice from the integrity commissioner, and then followed that advice, and that advice turned out to be wrong. So that's sort of like an official reduced error. Or committed to contravention to inadvertence or by reason of an error in judgment in good faith. So you can imagine in that case, if it was a deemed pecuniary interest and you didn't know that your son or daughter had an interest, that would fall under C. And for B, integrity commissioners can be appointed by council. It's, in jurisdictions like this, it's typically not. You don't have one on the payroll or something. So it doesn't say it, but I would think that if you sought legal advice on the issue and followed the legal advice, that would also count, even though it's not specifically integrated in the legislation. Conclusion, basically all I'm saying in this slide is, even if you are exonerated, the political fallout is real anyway. There's a lot of stigma associated with these things, especially in sort of this age of transparency that we now live in, where politicians are subject to great scrutiny. Even if a court finds that it was innocent, or it never happened, and there was no, there was no pecuniary interest, you still have to live with the stigma and the damage to your political career that a challenge like this might occasion. So our advice is always, seek the advice of council if you can, and be very careful with this stuff, because it's, it's becoming more common. Would you ask them questions?
Go back to the exemptions again.
There's a whole section of exemptions.
Yeah, specific exemptions.
Exceptions or exemptions.
All right, so clearly, if you're using a public utility and you're voting on a, a new gas contract or, or a power contract, you're not out of line. There's no conflict of interest. Even if you are a big user of utilities, it's not a conflict of interest. Again, Warren covered this one by, by reason of, of the councillor being entitled to receive on terms common to other persons, any service, or commodity, or any subsidy, or loan, or other benefit offered by the municipality. The last one doesn't apply. I don't know when the last time was we issued private debentures. Same as deposit with the municipality, that wouldn't apply. What's the next one? That's a good one for us.
Yes, yes.
If, if you happen to own farmland under the Drainage Act, and something's coming up relative to that drain, it's not a conflict of interest.
Although interestingly, I think I've been around when councillors have refused themselves to that exact issue. Interesting, but it is exempt.
But it's exempt.
Yeah.
So, I own the farm. Council is voting on whether or not to do the improvements on the drain that crosses my farm.
Right.
I'm exempt from having to declare a conflict.
Yeah, you can vote.
I can vote.
You can vote. If that makes sense, because the Drainage Act has its own regime for dealing with drainage.
Yes.
And yet, part of that is the, each person on the drain has a position. And so they're saying, "No other legislation is gonna take your position out of there, because you're part of that drainage scheme." Okay?
That said, and Steve might disagree with me here. Given the political heat that sometimes involves the second seventy improvements, I would be very careful.
Well, this, yeah.
Okay, so there, now we go.
Okay, so what, we just go through, you know, like?
Okay, so now, what about the guy on the bus? The, the objective third party. He would say?
He would say it's a conflict.
Yeah.
But this is why, but the act specifically exempts the Drainage Act.
Yes.
Okay? Because, because it's, it could ruin the rulings of the Drainage Act if, you can accomplish nothing if the majority of the landlords and, on the drain run council.
Right.
Because it's got a system for dealing with complaints.
Yeah.
So basically, in other, other words, we've had drains that we've had at the time, years ago, three councillors on here, and it was a ditch going through them. We controlled more than sixty percent of the land that it was going through.
Yeah, that's right.
Wouldn't have been able to vote with the best experience.
Wouldn't have been able to vote, and any, any, I mean, let's face it. If you follow the scheme of the Drainage Act, council really doesn't have a lot to say.
But it's true, that's true, and it's not being paid by taxpayer dollars either. It's being paid by the beneficiaries.
Sesssessive drinking.
Yeah, by the beneficiaries, yes.
But you know from previous experience what happens when something appears to be.
Yes.
Then you're drawn, that's what Warren's talking about. Then you're drawn into a giant drainage hearing or something, for no reason.
Sorry, the font's so small on this one.
By reason only that you have the farm tax exemption. what expenditures are exempt from taxation under that? You get the farm tax rebate, but I don't know what expenditures would be exempt from taxation from a farm.
Fairburo, Fairburo and Legion are exempt from taxes.
No, but I meant, this farm, it says here, "By reason of having an interest in farmlands that are exempt from taxation for certain expenditures under the Assessment Act." And I don't know what those would be. I know if you register, you get a farm tax rebate, but I don't think, I don't know what those expenditures that they'd be exempt from.
If we don't get a rebate anymore now, we just get a lower tax rate.
Lower tax rate, yeah.
I think that, yeah.
I don't, so, I don't know what that is, that's never come up. "By reason only of being a, a director or senior officer of a corporation incorporated for the purpose of carrying on business on behalf of the municipality." So if the port was incorporated, and you were the directors of the port, you're not in a conflict of interest when you vote as councillor about the port.
Okay, so using Fairburo now, so if I'm on the?
Fairburo's, Fairburo is, is, is a corporation on the Agricultural Society's side? Right?
Let's assume that.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. And I'm sitting here as a councillor, and I'm a member of the Fair Board, and now the council is voting whether to make a $2,000 donation to the Fair Board.
It does not, I don't think, fall under any of these specific exemptions.
No. So that, I know there's a case here where they dealt about charitable clubs.
We generally have on this council, when it was a regulation, those were charitable. When it was Edgersberg, there was two, a couple of us that were directors in the Fair Board, and we always declared a conflict if they were gonna give a grant, or just step away.
I think that's true, because that's by the Lions Club.
Another good example on this one is the, the council appoints a member to the library board.
Yeah, the library board kills, the library statute kills that.
Yes, and so does this.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're voting to make our honorarium to the library board.
That's right, but that's your job.
Yeah, it's an exemption. And it's not a pecuniary interest, then.
But there'd be some people that say, "I don't care if we have a fair." You know, like, "I, I, I wanna take that money, and I wanna put it to subsidized housing." So that's where you get, that's where there is a conflict, because it is still, the Fair Board is still a narrower group of interests, even though they're charitable, like the Lions Club's charitable, or the Masons, or the, whatever, the Kinsmen. If you're a Kinsman, then you can't, you can't vote to give a grant to the Kinsman, because that's not something that is for the benefit of all of the community. Because you gotta remember, if you're gonna pave the road down by your place, everybody can drive on the road. It's not your driveway.
Yeah, you gotta be super careful with the charities, because you can see it both ways. You can see how charity, on one hand, is not going into your pocket by the fact that it's charity.
Well, here, here's the next one. An allowance for attendance at meetings to which you might be entitled by reason of being a member of or volunteer fire brigade. So you're, you're on the fire brigade, and you vote to give the firemen an increase. That's not, that's not a, that's exempt, okay? The same as you, you, clearly, you vote your own salaries, right?
Yes.
That's not exempt, your own honorarium, so, because you have to do your job. What's, does, does it go on here?
Oh, that's it. Well, there's, there's two more, but the other two are the generals, so I shared with everyone.
I have one, Steve.
Yeah. I'm the president, acting president of the Cardinal Youth Centre. If we apply for a grant to the Edward, Edwardburg Cardinal Township, can I sit on that to vote?
Who owns the, the youth centre?
It's no problem.
No, but is it part of the, is it a municipal board?
No, no.
Then you can't, you, you have a conflict.
I have a conflict.
Yeah. But if it was operated as a board of council, then you can't. Because that's your job, you're on there to promote it. But no, you can't do it.
So this man now, so he's the president of a board?
But he's not, it's not a municipal board.
No, that's okay. But he has no pecuniary interest there.
He's got, he's got an indirect pecuniary.
Indirect pecuniary interest.
It's deemed to have, because he's a member of it. But you know, that stuff hasn't changed.
No.
That's been the same. These cases are, there's nothing astounding new here. The, the biggest thing I see in, in here, that even when they talk about what's new, is?
Well, first of all, the written.
The, the written thing, and, and is the biggest new change. And the other thing is, they put in what the principles are for what that means.
And then, but that's just qualifying what the cases have said about it.
And, and also, they've, they've said that a judge can use discretion. He doesn't have to declare the seat vacant, or whatever it is he could do before.
Now, Stephen, in, in that situation with Stephen here, if he was classified as ex officio to that committee, would that make a difference?
Well, I never really, don't really know what ex officio means. I know that means, I used to be there.
You're just sort of a liaison between.
No, but a lobbyist, he can be a lobbyist for them. Like, like I used to work on the, I used to be in charge of the youth centre. I like it, it's a good idea. I support it. I'm not there anymore, but I support it. I think that's okay.
The answer to that's gotta be no. In the other, the act doesn't specifically say this, but when we're looking at indirect interests, it's having a voting authority in the corporation. So if you don't have any authority as to how the money is spent or dealt with, and you're just sort of there without voting capacity, there's no indirect pecuniary.
Oh, I see, okay. And then the other thing is whether it was appointed by councillor, whether it's a standalone thing.
Yeah, when it's appointed by councillor, it's expected that the councillor appointed to that's gonna carry the ball, right?
Right.
So I got a question for you. Steve, Steve's in particular, being that I operate a, own a quarry and operate it by Tackleberry, I've always declared a conflict of interest if, if Tackleberry's bidding on any jobs. But if somebody, if he, if we're not bidding on any jobs, and somebody, do I step away anyway? Because maybe, I don't know, maybe Crookshank gets the thing in our quarries closer, so then I decide to draw a gravel at our quarry rather than their own? How do I deal with that? And I don't even know, we don't even know at the time whether they're gonna?
Get the contract?
Well, even if they, if they get the contract, the one time years ago here, Tackleberry bid on a job, I declared a conflict. Tackleberry bid on a job, I declared a conflict of interest on it. Cardinal Gravel got the job, I declared a conflict because Tackleberry bid, but if Tackleberry hadn't have bid, on it, Cardinal generally always hauls out their own kit, they never, but then they turned around that year and bought from Tackleberry.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, how do I deal with a situation like that?
Well, on the bidding, you know, the bidding going, the bill goes ten to it.
Yeah.
Yes. But...
My instinct said that's too remote.
Yeah.
Like, we're talking about potential versus actual.
Yeah, this, this will be abrupt for a second in terms of too remote. Tori, you were talking about having a business?
Mm-hmm.
What, sorry, what is this?
I own a hair salon.
Okay, so, okay, well, that wouldn't work. Suppose, suppose you, you own a, uh, you, you delivered yet a fuel tank depot, like where you were storing, delivering to farms diesel and whatever. Somebody could get a, a, and suppose you were acting as a safe acquaintance. And so, Corvo Gravel gets the contract and, or, or Tackleberry does, because Tackleberry buys all the fuel from the killing. So if Tackleberry gets the contract, and all of a sudden, your delivery's troubled, so you're gonna be delivering on site. Okay? That's what Warren's talking about, is being too remote. I mean, you're sitting there, you don't, you're selling fuel to everybody. And you can't say, well, no, I can't vote on this in case they buy fuel from me. You say, I, I can't vote on this in case they buy aggregate from me.
So basically, as long as, as long as it's, Tackleberry's not bidding the job, it's other contractor bidding. I have no idea where they're gonna get, buy the gravel from unless they've, unless we've signed a contract with them.
And, and they're not really buying from you anyway, Corvo Gravel buying from Tackleberry.
Yeah, Tackleberry buys the rock from me and he, so...
Yeah, no, I think, I think you'd have to have a, you know, Tori initially asked the question way back, you know, if I've got my best customer coming in, but you're not, that person's not being treated differently than anybody else. You know, you don't know. I don't think that's a conflict. Honestly, we don't, I probably don't get a call a year from our other three clients about how, you don't. Because truth of matter is, I, I don't know how often, how often they would really come up.
That said, there's no harm in privilege.
I know, but again, you don't want to be accused of declaring a conflict as a way out of the, the...
Decision making, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but it, it does say in there that, it says that the court will consider what reasonable measures you take, so you, you know... And, and they said if you ask the integrity commissioner, integrity commissioner says you're clear, then you're clear. And as Warren says, you probably, if you ask the municipal lawyer, the lawyer says you're clear, you're clear. You, you didn't hide it, you didn't shrug it off or something like that. It just...
See, the awkward part about people or counselors, elected officials, declaring conflicts when they really don't have one, is the following situation. We're five. If one of us declares a conflict when he doesn't have a conflict.
Yeah.
Now you end up in a situation where you got two and two and a, and a tie vote fails.
That's what happened in the, in, in the last couple of issues I've had with the municipalities where they've said, we think this person didn't declare a conflict, and now we think we're gonna have a problem, because although we still have a quorum, it's not gonna work, and, and that's being done purposely to avoid sticking a neck out.
Yeah.
You get to vote to fail, but you don't have to vote against it.
That's right. And that's, that's, you know, that's something that I bet you wasn't addressed in the presentation given to you, and it's not addressed in the Conflict of Interest Act, is don't forget, folks, we're actually have a job to do. And we, people elected us expecting us to make the decisions, not expecting us to say, oh, me, conflict of interest.
It's, it's an easy way out if it's a, if it's a tight situation.
There's no question, yeah.
It's a very easy way out. But there's no remedy for the, for the chop that takes the easy way out either, according to what we've learned.
Yeah. But it's not, it's, I, I, I have to say that you're not the only municipality that said, we got an issue here. We went to the Roma and, and they came out with all guns blazing and, uh... And I looked it up, the act, and I said, I really don't see anything really astounding here.
Well, I wasn't at the same session that, that Counselor Cameron was at, I was at the same conference, but when he came and we had coffee after the session, he was visibly shaped. It was, it was brutal. And I, you know, and I said, well, you know, I can't believe what you're telling me, you, this doesn't make any common sense whatsoever. I phoned Deborah late. I said, Deb, Bud checked this out for me, because what he's telling me didn't make any sense.
She called me, but she wasn't the only clerk that did it, saying, you know, what the heck's, as I say, it's, I looked.
God, I'm glad to hear that.
There's nothing really astounding.
I'm surprised that, um, an organization like Roma, uh, when they're organizing these sessions, wouldn't vet their speakers more carefully. I mean, they spread, I'm going to say, a lot of concern amongst the group that was in that session.
Yeah.
And it turns out that a lot of it was not...
It's the same as the, uh, the, uh, the publication, what's it called?
Not Stones?
No, Municipal.
Municipal World?
Municipal World. I've seen some stuff written in there that's just, must have been wrong.
Seriously?
Yeah. Well, the last, well, the one, remember the, the, where you could, in a lame duck session, it was suggested you could pass a bylaw giving authority to the clerk? I mean, that just made absolutely no sense whatsoever. But that same author had also written one that reminded me two or three years ago about something that was wrong too, but it's, it's, they just, nobody's, we see it in our own lawyers weekly. I like, well, we have two publications that come out, and I look at it and I look at who wrote the article and say, well, that's okay, you know, you toss it aside. Say, well, I don't care what that person thinks.
Oh, is that a fact?
So, it, it, that's no different than the internet, eh? I mean, like this...
Well, that's true.
The misinformation, that's...
Yeah, but generally, when you, when you speak to a law firm, you do expect to get consistency of the interpretation of the law.
Yeah, well, I'd say your, your odds are steadily decreasing.
Now, present company is stood in the court.
Oh, no. But I think you gotta be careful.
So does anybody have any more questions? We appreciate, by the way, we appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thanks.
And introducing yourselves to the new members of council, and Warren, it's nice to see you again. Did a great job for us on the municipal, on the Draining Act. I'm sure you're all honed up. That was a tough one to wind our way through. Now, now, Stephen, I know that you're probably on your way back to Winchester, but you're quite welcome to stay. It's better than dinner and movies.
Uh, only my group better, yeah. End to the movie, eh?
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Steve, thanks, Warren.
Dave Beck.
Okay, so at item six on the agenda, we have no discussion items, and we're at item seven A, which is the auditor's response letter, which has now been circulated to everybody. And if there's any, if there's any questions about it, we'll try to answer them. If not, we'll have the final version sent out to the auditor tomorrow. I think we already checked and they're prepared to accept it as late as April, or the end of the month, right? Yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was well done.
Yeah, me too.
I have no questions or...
Okay, I'm moving on then, and so we'll prepare that for final submission. And I'm moving on then to the procedural bylaw update that you have in front of you. And there's three small changes to the procedural bylaw. And I'm just trying to get rid of something here. And the changes to the procedural bylaw are outlined in blue. And I guess one of the big changes is that the meeting is now defined, eh? Which we knew was coming. A meeting means any regular, special, or other meeting of council, or of a local board, or of a committee of either of them, where a quorum of members is present and members discuss or otherwise deal with any matter in a way that materially advances the business or decision-making of the council, local board, or committee. So theoretically, three of us can get together and we can have a chat as long as we are not materially advancing the business of council. So that's one major change. And the other one comes on section or clause forty-four. Unless otherwise provided, the confirmation bylaws shall receive all three readings at the same time during the same meeting. So this is our procedural bylaw, and you know how we do first and second in one reading, and then if that first and second reading is unanimous approval, we proceed to third reading and the same meeting. This will make an exception for the procedural bylaw, which there's no real reason that it should be held up.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, through, through the chair, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's shown here as number forty-four, and then forty-four is also below it, is there going to be a change on that?
There will be a change throughout the procedural bylaw. I just did the initial changes to show you guys what would be coming. Of course, when it comes at the end of the month for first and second reading, all the numbers will be corrected.
Okay, just, I just caught that, so...
I just didn't want to go ahead and change them all and then somebody change it back and then renumber everything all over again.
Good, 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 good thinking.
Now, I'm looking at clause forty-eight. If no amendments are proposed following first and second reading of a bylaw, and it has received unanimous support, the bylaw may be given third and final reading at the same meeting as first and second reading. So that's the process that we're working with right now. And then the third change here, I thought I saw it, there it is, on clause eighty-six. Committees of all members of council plus citizen volunteers may include, but are not limited to, matters involving administration, finance, public works, environmental services, and recreational facilities. The meetings are generally to be conducted in a manner similar to council meetings. Citizen volunteers shall declare an oath of confidentiality in order to be included when matters are discussed in camera and where the matter can, remains confidential in nature. And I think, uh, Counselor Hunter, this addresses your concern, where we all make a declaration of office, but the volunteer members don't make the declaration. But if this is implemented, then they'll at least make, uh, uh, an undertaking not to, an oath, they'll at least make an oath of confidentiality. So those are the changes. Uh, now, are we looking for a motion to recommend? There's no recommendation here, or is there?
There is.
Yeah, there is. The committee recommends that council adopt the updated procedural bylaw as attached. Looking for a mover and a seconder, please. So I got Counselor Hunter and Counselor Billabaw seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Motion is carried, so that'll go to council. We dealt with that council, and then I'm at seven C, which is a severance appeal from Bissett. And there is a recommendation here as well, I'm gonna get the recommendation on the floor here first. So looking for a mover and a seconder, so move to deal with the recommendation. Counselor Cameron and a seconder. Can't find a seconder yet, so maybe I'll get into it a little bit, we'll find a seconder. I don't know whether you've read the briefing note, but in this particular situation, we're backing off on one of the conditions that we imposed as a condition of severance, or no. Was it a condition of severance or, or is it a reason? Yeah, basically. I guess the one thing that both the appellant and the planner miss is that by reconfiguring these lots, and we did ask for an engineering study, but by reconfiguring these lots, do the boundary lines change in a way which would compromise the septic systems?
So through the chair, in speaking with the planner, his feeling is that it would not?
Well...
And, and, and therefore is, is reasoning behind his opinion that that condition is not required in the, in the reconfiguration?
I can see where an engineering study, I can see where an engineering study wouldn't be required from the point of view, is the land large enough to hold the septic field, et cetera? But I just wondered, did we look at the other side of it? Which is proximity to property lines? Which doesn't really, that doesn't really involve an engineering study, does it?
Through, through the chair, no, one, one of the things the planner indicated was through the severance process that the health, the health unit would be involved in, in, in looking at the, at the systems. And there didn't, there didn't appear to be any red flags noted within that. And that's, that's where he's holding his, is, his interpretation.
Okay, so anybody else have any questions here, Counselor Billabaw?
In both, uh, Mr. Grant, like both properties?
Through the chair, yes. The, the feeling is that because both well and septic systems have been in place and functioning and, and not causing adverse effects, his interpretation, the planner's interpretation is that that reconfiguration would not result in, in, in any kind of adverse effects. And therefore, the, the study not being required.
And the health department too, has been there, is that right?
Uh, the health, the, the health department would be contacted through that severance process.
Yeah, they have to sign off on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so now the motion, or the recommendation is still looking for a seconder. I have it moved by Counselor Cameron. Okay, Counselor Dayshump, did you say you have a question?
Yeah, another question.
Yeah? Um, putting you as a seconder?
Yeah, sure, you can put me as a seconder. Still have a question, though. For, for this, the, the original severance, I, I remember it, I've looked it over. I read through, you know, the, the reason why. How many lots are there originally?
If, if I, if I am not mistaken, there were two lots.
And it's creating...
And it's creating two, it's creating two lots, but they're now reconfigured, sort of, I'm gonna say north to south as opposed to, to east to west.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they were originally, originally the lots ran from County Road Two to the river. Each lot ran County Road Two to the river. Now each lot will run, one lot will be here and the other...
So the, so the pink and the yellow is one lot?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I, in, in my mind, I had, I was reading it as three. The blue is one, the pink is one, and the yellow is one. That's incorrect.
The blue is retained.
So the, the blue stays as the frontage on the highway two. The river lot becomes one single river lot from the back of that dam. Right?
So, but then, sir, the way I'm reading this, this configuration in the front lot, the part, the part severance A, that was originally with the pink part, right? That had road frontage, it's coming straight down.
Yes.
Now it's being added to the front lot, has all the road frontage, and all there is is basically just a narrow roadway coming into this small lot that's on the river. And I, I have a real problem with these real, little tiny lots along the river.
Oh. But there is a road allowance that goes through that, is there not? Correct, there is, there, there is a road allowance that does go through that.
Actually, it's not a road allowance, it's a right of way.
It's a right of way, yes, okay.
Big difference. We do not maintain it.
It is right of way.
My, my, my apologies, it's private road.
Yeah.
But, but with the right of way is a...
What width of right-of-way is the charge? Numbers are smaller, I can't make them move, but the right-of-way allowance is there.
It's, it.
Looks like sixty-eight, but you know, that looks like a lot of.
Through, through, through the chair, I used to do some work down along this area, actually, to be quite truthful, on, in some cases, on some of this property. And Riddle Road comes from number two, and it comes down, and then it goes sort of to it. You might refer to it as a T intersection. One section goes east, and one section goes west. We're dealing with the one that goes west. And to be quite truthful, it's really nothing more than a, in some cases, a walking path. But I think there's, from what I remember here, I think there's only one cottage beyond the pink line to the west, so to speak.
Oh, no, there's more than that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Maybe three.
Okay, there could be, all right, there could very well be.
One fairly new, actually. And one of the big.
Well, okay, I wouldn't know the new one, yes.
What I was kinda looking at here, in this right-of-way, basically, this is a small lot to start with, and now it's got a right-of-way that cuts that lot in half.
Well, just a minute now. My understanding is that the, this yellow line down here, it disappears.
Yeah, I don't mean the division here, I mean the right-of-way that comes down from number two.
Yes, what about it?
It cuts that lot right in half.
Yeah, he, yes, but he owns, he owns that lot, and he owns that right-of-way. He owns the land that the right-of-way traverses, and he, as the owner of that land, offers a right-of-way to the people to the west of him.
Yes.
Yeah. And there are three places to the west of him.
Yes.
One of which is the big one at the far end.
Yes.
And the gentleman that just died, I can't remember his name, and J.P., who has moved. Yeah.
Well, the gentleman used to live in Finley Creek. Fair enough, the creek there, he bought that.
It could be, yeah, it could be.
Okay, any further discussion here?
So we're taking something that didn't conform to begin with, and we're making it into something that still doesn't conform?
Well, that's one way of looking at it.
I think we're really just, all we're doing is just easing, easing the burden on the landlord there. And he's been at this since two thousand and twelve, maybe even before.
Well, but this is the first time we've seen this application for severance.
Yes, I understand.
The big problem was at the top of part six. Part six running from the river up. That entire parcel was owned by the chap that owned this house here.
Yes.
And the new house is here, this entire parcel was owned by him. And there were problems.
Are there potential problems with, with the lower half that is on the river? And the possible application of it being divided the way it looks on our map again right now?
Well, I mean, the concept here with the application, help me out here, was that the two lower parcels would merge, and the two upper parcels would merge.
My understanding is that severance B, which is the yellow, would combine with parcel B, and parcel A would combine, or severance A would combine with parcel A.
Yes, that's the way it was, that's the way it was explained to us.
Through the chair, I guess basically, I have no problem doing that way. I guess with the engineering report from the health department's gotta approve it. I just don't, when I look at the diagram here of where the house is, and where the right-of-way across for people to go back and forth across, and then the holding tanks on the opposite side of the right-of-way, I just don't see how the health department's gonna approve having a passageway over top of a line going to a holding tank, so.
Yes, but again, those people that use that right-of-way, they use it at his pleasure. I, my understanding is, although I'm told that the use of that right-of-way is written into their deeds.
Showing as a right-of-way, so if it's a right-of-way, it's definitely showed, it wrote into a deed, so.
It should be, yes.
Yeah. But you couldn't stop them from going across.
No.
They'd drive a car down across there, they're gonna drive a car down across there, so.
Right, and if you look at the drawing really carefully, you'll see that the corner of his house.
Yeah, is on the right-of-way.
Is on the right-of-way, yeah.
That's what, just, I guess if they let it go through, they let it go through. It just seems like it wasn't very well thought in the first place, when the severance was granted in the first place, so, but that's before our time.
Okay, I'd like to bring this to a conclusion, if there's no further questions. We have a recommendation in front of us, it's been duly moved and seconded. I'm about to call the question on the recommendation. Those in favor, please signify.
Aye.
Motion is carried. And so now, I'm at item number seven D, which is the hiring bylaw of twenty fifteen seventeen, as amended by twenty eighteen sixteen, and procedure outlined. And what are we drawing here? What are we doing, maybe to the deputy clerk, what do we have to here?
Actually, this is going to be going through C.A.O. at this point.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we thought from the discussion at the budget meeting, that it would be sort of advantageous to sort of go through the hiring procedure in the general sense of how that hiring procedure would work for a senior management position versus a non-senior management position. So if you want to turn to page three of four on a bylaw twenty eighteen sixteen.
Oh, this is the newest version.
This is the newest version. I guess before we start, maybe if we just look at the bylaw twenty eighteen sixteen.
What page, excuse me, Mr. Grant, what page is that on the, on our?
On the, on the tablet?
Well, you don't have the tablet. Three or four?
Three or four.
It's forty-five, I think, online.
In the corner, it should have seven D on it.
Possibly forty-seven.
So I just want.
Skip to eight, bylaw twenty eighteen dash sixteen?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
My apologies, I shouldn't be aware that some have paper and some.
No, I'm sorry, no.
Nope, nope.
I'm sorry.
Typically, I have the electronic.
Yes.
I'm on paper tonight, so. The only change from the twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen dash seventeen, is the sentence, "When hired in the senior management position, council will make the final hiring decision based on a recommendation of the hiring team", was deleted in its entirety. And that was leading up to, or in advance of the election and the potentiality of a lame duck, should, you know, a physician of, who would have received a resignation and required to hire somebody during that time. Everything else in that twenty fifteen bylaw is in the twenty eighteen. So I'll turn over to page three of four on hiring procedure. So just starting from item number one. Upon receiving an employee's written resignation, supervisor will inform the C.A.O. or port general manager immediately. And if the resigning employee is the C.A.O. or the port G.M., then they shall personally notify council. And then the C.A.O. or port G.M. shall ensure that a current job description is in place, which includes a description of the position and the qualification and requirements. Submission deadline for applicant and contact person shall be established, and this task will be delegated, can be delegated to an employee if appropriate. So applications for employment will require submission of a cover letter and resume, if requested. Additional information, such as proof of graduation or diplomas and degrees, must be submitted. The job advertisement shall be broadcast using the township or port website, newspaper, or other means as appropriate. Closing date for submissions of applicants will be determined by the C.A.O. or port G.M. and will be established to ensure maximum opportunity is given to applicants.
Okay, so I just want to stop there for a second, because that was one of the items of discussion earlier, is the question of the advertisement shall be broadcast using township or port website, newspaper, and other means as appropriate. Now, it doesn't say or, it says and, other means as appropriate. So I would take it that newspaper then becomes a requirement, and then the other means are as appropriate. So I think that was what one of the bones of contention was. Was there a newspaper advertisement? So the way I read this, newspaper is required.
So through the chair, that is, that is correct.
Okay, so we have an understanding there. Now, what other means might we use other than the social media, website, and the newspaper?
So through the chair, in circumstances where it may be a licensed position, you may use, you know, an association website. Or with respect to water and wastewater operators, there's typically associations that would broadcast those type of positions.
And there's also municipal world.
Correct, yes, depending on.
Counselor Dilabah.
I made a little note on that one, Mr. Grant. I'm just wondering, like, when it says another means, we could say it's already on our website, Facebook, Twitter, and Service Ontario logo. Which is part of, I think, the employment.
Well.
Service Ontario.
Well, Service Ontario, I don't know. Do we post at the Service Ontario?
Um, typically.
I don't think we do.
Through the chair, typically, I have not recalled us posting on Service Ontario. Typically, we, certainly in the last several years, we have been utilizing Facebook, Twitter.
Related associations, something CTO, Ontario Building.
Association, yeah.
Whenever it's related to, mostly.
Okay, so those are all in addition to?
Correct.
Right?
That is correct.
The website and the newspaper?
Correct.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number five, department head and/or C.A.O. or port general, port G.M. will determine the shortlist of acceptable candidates based on a review of their resumes submitted. And only those selected for an interview will be contacted. Scheduling interviews of the shortlist of candidates will commence as soon as is practical after the closing date of the job advertisement. This task can be delegated to an employee if applicable. Number seven, candidates will be required to provide at least two references. Where the position warrants or requires, criminal reference checks may be performed. Reference checks are then conducted on the preferred candidates either by the C.A.O., port G.M., or department head. Once reference checks are completed and satisfactory, the preferred candidate is selected, and an offer of employment shall be made in writing. And the preferred candidate will have one week to sign and confirm the offer of employment or decline it. The next preferred candidate on the list would then be offered the position if the first one declined. And once the offer of employment has been formally accepted, all other candidates interviewed for the position will be advised at the outcome.
Okay, so, any questions with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through the chair. The whole contentious issue here the other night that brought this to being was the fact that council still doesn't really know that someone in a, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, non-senior management, has been hired. And it just, it just comes to my mind that, and as I said the other night, we're the last line. We're, this is where everything happens, right here at this table. And we don't know who's been hired until we either hear about it from the C.A.O.'s report, or by an irate, an irate taxpayer, for whatever reason. So can we not build into this procedure something that we do get notified that there, number one, there's a position available? And I don't want to take anything away from the department heads or the department managers. They have to do their job, they have to do their due diligence. But to save a situation that happened, then I think we have to be aware of something that can happen here. So I don't have, I don't have an answer for it other than the fact that I'd like to see something written in, that council is made aware that, number one, the position is being sought, or, yes, the, the position is being sought, and a shortlist of the people that are, that are on board if, for the manager to make his decision. That way, if deputy mayor's neighbor has applied for the job, we would know it. Or, in my case, my neighbor, or whatever.
But just, I gotta stop right there. It becomes very dangerous for counselor, for council to be notified of who the applicants are prior to the final selection being done. And I'll tell you why. There are many folks who will apply to us for a job, but they don't want their existing employer to know that they are seeking a job elsewhere. So they really apply to us in confidence that we're expected to keep. If, on the other hand, they're offered employment, they have then a week to notify their existing employer and to sign our offer of employment. At that point, at the point where they've signed our offer of employment is the time, I think, that we should be notified of who the successful applicants were. Now, the whole other aspect of determining how this procedure and reviewing how this procedure was carried out is a completely different task. And it, and it's, I mean, we're reviewing the procedure right now, but, and you're asking for a change in the procedure, which I don't think is possible because of the confidentiality aspect of it.
I don't think we would want that.
But, but, but there is one aspect of it, though, of what the council is asking for that I think is critical. And that is that, I think it's important that we know when the vacancy has occurred.
That's right, yeah.
Yes, and I think, to the most part, we do get notifications of that. And then notified once the position has been filled. It's courtesy if staff would notify us that we've had twelve applications and our interviews are being held on Monday the twenty-sixth. That's a courtesy, but it helps us to know what's happening. But Counselor Dilabah, you wanted in, and Counselor Hunter, you wanted in.
I'll go after that.
All I had was, make a note through this, was that if we could put in something of, whatever position's coming up, and there was recurrential township, is that we get notified by the council. council, the opening date, closing date, and the department manager notifying us that the position has been filled, period.
You don't, you don't want to know the lucky candidate?
No, if he wants his share, because we're gonna get a name right from the CEO, right?
Yes, we are, yes.
Down the road, so, just that it's filled, that the open, close, open, opening day, closing date, and have the department managers, you know, give us an email saying that, hey, the position has been filled, and he can tell us, or the later date will hear.
Okay, so, Counselor Hunter wanted in, or the CAO wants in, and Deputy Mayor did.
Deputy Mayor did.
Two, three times.
Okay, I'll go ahead. I had notification, I don't recall ever that we weren't notified. The CEO's always notified us when there's positions coming up, we've always known it. Knew, we knew these, both these positions, we knew were coming up. Wasn't nothing new, it was notified to us they're coming up, and it was on our website and stuff there. We were told by the CEO on our report who the ones were who were hired, so, like, I think this thing's saying that we were not being notified and stuff, I think we've always been notified, so, like, see, it's always come forward, but.
Okay.
So, so through, through the chair, if, if I'm, if I'm understanding, the, the general consensus is a more timely notification on a vacancy opening, and, and when the vacancy is filled?
Yes.
And, and, and I, I, I will take the error on, on, on the latest. Typically, the, the CAO is very good at, at the notification of, of occupancy and, and the vacancy being filled. I, my feeling was that it was, it was about a week before the administrative report, and figured it was, it was a reasonable time to put it in at that point. However, it would appear that, that, that may be a little tardy in, in certain circumstances.
Well, it's, I'll put it in the same category, I know Deputy Mayor, DeShawn wants in, but I'll put it in the same category as, and I didn't really subscribe to this, but I have worked for a number of mayors who insisted that if there was a fire call, they knew where the fire was. And that was in a couple of municipalities. And, and the reason was because they were the ones that got the call from the press. And so, for them to get a call from the press about the big fire on, on the main street, and not know about it, became a source of embarrassment, so, it's just a question, in my mind, of keeping council informed. Count, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To me, it, it feels like we're, we're beginning a discussion of the micromanagement of the directors or the managers of the departments, and with, with regard to the, the last hiring, and maybe some, some issues perceived as being that. I, for one, when I read the, the Hiring Bylaw, I see that, as council, we, we have input and say on, on CAO and Port GM, or those, their department heads themselves. The way that I understand and receive chain of command is that the, the department heads are responsible for staffing themselves, and they answer directly to the CAO. So, for, for myself, I want little or, or zero input on, on any of those, those positions that aren't outlined in, in number seven. So, if that's where Counselor Cameron is headed with that, that we're gonna start micromanaging what each director's doing, I want no part of that. I want to be really clear in that.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll just respond to that, Deputy Mayor, that, no, that is not the, that is not the, the issue. I clearly stated that I want the managers to do their own hiring, that I, I do not want to micromanage their job in any way, shape, or form. It's just the fact that council has to have some kind of notification, that all of this is going, as to what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, so, earlier, I believe, that you said that, that you wanted a copy of all of the applicants and their names, and, and stuff like that, and I just don't see that, that is any of our, of our job, unless it's a CAO, Port GM, or a department head. If it's somebody that's doing a different job, or, or a junior job, I, I think you suggested that we should know that, and I feel very different about that.
Yes, and I did, but, but it was, the intent on that was at council's, council's decision, not on my, not on my, my lone, sole, sole request. That, that was a suggestion, that was more of a suggestion that, that I was, that I was making.
Okay, well, I think the long and the short of this, I'm gonna wind this up, because I think we're going in circles here. I think I'm gonna wind it up this way. Rather than suggesting any kind of adjustments to the bylaw, we'll treat the fact that what we're really looking for is to be kept informed in a timely manner, in a broad, general sense as to what, and what is going on. And I, I accept the comments from the CAO. We know that, that he's really doing double duty right now, filling in the CAO's position while at the same time acting as Director of Operations, while at the same time working us through a budget cycle. So, it's understandable to me that things might have such a crack, but let's not make a big issue over it. Now, but having said all that, I do remind council and staff, that at any time, council has the right to review processes. And that's not what's being asked for in this particular case, but we do have the right to review processes. And, and that, that's just one of our jobs that we have to do. So, I'm gonna move on, because there's nothing specifically coming out of this by means of a recommendation. I heard Counselor Dilaba, I've heard all the discussion, and I think the staff has heard the discussion as well, and, and I'm just gonna draw the attention of the clerk to one small error, but it's more an error, it's more an error of, how do I want to say this? Spelling, I think. It's on page four of four, under applicable laws and regulations. And the sentence is, "Township recognizes all the statutes and laws it is bounded by." The last ED is out of place. Council recognizes all the statutes and laws it is bounded by. P, nothing. Okay, so I'm about to move on here, about to move on, and I'm at item eight on the agenda, which is council inquiries or notice of motion. Does any councillor have any inquiries or notices of motion coming up? Hearing none, I'm going to go to item nine. Now, the mayor's report will be dealt with substantively in the closed session, which is coming up, but just for the sake of openness and transparency to the public, I'll just report this, that the interest in our application, no, I better rephrase that, the interest in our nomination, nominating ourself into the Ontario Job Site Challenge, is quite broad, and I am getting a response to it at several different levels. And I'll have more to say about that response at the meeting next Monday night, I hope. But I will be discussing that particular item in council, in camera tonight, because it does have implications for a property purchaser acquisition. So, that will be the reason that we're going in camera. And I think I'm looking for someone, well, I have to go to the question period first, and then I'll be looking for the motion to go into the closed session, so, you know, no, no questions this evening? So, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to go into the closed session.
Myself, sent by Deputy Mayor DeShawn. That council of the whole proceed into closed session at eight ten PM, in order to address a matter pertaining to receiving advice, substitute solicitor, client, privilege, gender, including communications necessary for a purpose specifically seven thirty truck stop, acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board, specifically at the Land Bank in closed session minutes dated July ninth, twenty eighteen.
Just a correction on the time, it's seven fifty.
I haven't turned back.
Oh!
Did it jump a bit?
Okay, I'm gonna call a motion on the question to end closed session, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, and I'm just gonna take about a five minute break here, and then we'll start.
Moved by myself, seconded by myself, and seconded by Counselor John Hunter, that the closed meeting does now adjourn, and the open meeting of the Committee of the Whole does now resume at eight thirty-one PM.
Okay, those in favor of the motion to rise? Motion is carried. And so, I'm reporting out from the closed session. And the first thing I'm gonna deal with is the minutes of July, the closed session of July the ninth, moved by Counselor Cameron and seconded by Counselor Dilaba, the Committee of the Whole approves the minutes of the closed session dated July the ninth, twenty eighteen. Those in favor? Motion is carried. And then, secondly, um, council received legal advice on a matter pertaining to the seven thirty truck stop bankruptcy, and our efforts to realize on the costs of our environmental cleanup. And proceeded, and issued direction to staff to proceed with executing the advice received by the solicitor on that matter. And then on the third issue, which was dealt with in camera, which is the fact that the Township Veterans Board Cardinal has nominated themselves into the Ontario Job Site Challenge. Council was briefed on recent developments with regard to the nomination into the process, and was apprised of some possible upcoming meeting with regard to that matter. And so that concludes the reporting out from the closed session. And now, I'm looking for the motion to adjourn our meeting here tonight.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cameron, that the Committee of the Whole does now adjourn at eight thirty-three PM.
Okay, those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion is carried.